Uh, call the meeting's order for those who care to, please rise for an opening prayer. A salute to our flag. Mr. John Jones, would you open us up for a prayer?
Well, thank you for the, uh, pleasure and opportunity to get to see you and to start everything we send you to be a person to you. I see your face and keep us and families safe and then we pray.
Amen.
Blessed are the nations who live in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you ever find another group like us?
That is pretty.
Can you find her again?
Well, let's see, a few announcements tonight. Uh, Kathy Harrelson?
Yes.
You have a birthday?
Yes, it is.
Right on, forty-two.
That's right.
Again, I don't say how many times again. Last day for candidate filing will be January nineteenth. The city offices are closed on Monday. And, uh, let's see. Reception for Mr. Krychki. This is Mr. Krychki's last meeting with us, uh, before he takes over Maryland Heights as the new city administrator of Maryland Heights. Bless you, sir.
Motion.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
You do that, you're allergic to it. That'll be Thursday, January fourteenth, uh, four to six at Republic Community Center. And, uh, please, uh, come out and say your wishes to Jim. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, sir. And with that, I want to give you a nice flash on behalf of the city. It's real, and it's pointed, and it's sharp.
Oh, you better move.
So stand up, we're gonna get a picture. Dwayne, do you have your camera? Cause I know you. She'll take one. Oh, here we go. on Thursday at four o'clock, so. It has been put, so we're gonna see you next week or last. Eight years? Eight and a half years, something like that? Wow.
I'd say something, but I, I don't know if I can.
All right, honest other things, we're gonna have a presentation of people, however, we're gonna get those on the next council meeting, catch everybody, uh, from the distance all the way down. We did have a good year this year with the Mayor's Christmas tree raising money for people helping people. I think what was the total, Jared? Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen forty-seven.
Fifteen hundred and forty-seven dollars raised, just through a hundred Christmas ornaments, uh, for people helping people. It's a great, uh, cause that they have donated their time and effort to, so. And Jared, thank you for the parks, for, uh, putting all that together for us and keeping track of it. Thank you, sir. Let's see. Open it up to a sense of participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, uh, please step forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes. Welcome, Erica.
Good evening. My name is Erica Wheeler, and I live at one seven two North Ladera Drive in the Sandstone subdivision. And, um, I live just west of Irwin Printing, and I am coming before you because I have had some difficulties with, um, Irwin Printing allowing diesel trucks to park on their lot, and they are, um, placing their trucks right directly behind my privacy fence and then running those trucks all night to keep them warm with the low temperatures. And last night was one of the incidents, and, um, it meant from eight o'clock until four thirty this morning. Needless to say, I did not get any sleep, and I called nine one one at two o'clock, and the police came out and, um, walked around the truck for about thirty minutes, and they were unable to get it shut off and unable to contact anyone to shut off the truck. Um, so they said because it was on private property, there was nothing that they could do. Um, this was, of course, unacceptable to me, so I called Irwin Printing myself at four o'clock in the morning and expecting that I was going to leave a message on an answering machine, and, um, the manager, Marcy, picked up the phone and said that they are a commercial property and that's so, and then she just left it at that. My, uh, reason to coming to you is because I want to know what my options are as a citizen, and this is a peace disturbance to me, and it's keeping me up at night, and it's been more than just one occasion.
Want me to answer that? I don't know, maybe Ron can jump in as well, but, uh, Eric, I don't know, um, if our codes are written in a way that we could actually go in there being a commercial property, they probably are correct, that we probably do have, you know, whatever may be considered a loophole in there, but it certainly doesn't mean that they can't be a little more courteous.
I looked up the peace disturbance, um...
Ordinance.
Ordinance, that's the word I'm looking for, and, um, it says nothing about the difference between commercial properties and private properties. If a person knowingly, um, has noise, and they knowingly continue to have noise, which I have on two different occasions written notes on the diesel trucks to ask them to move it to the other side of the commercial property, or at least not directly behind my fence, and that has not been done, especially to do closer to my fence. So, um, there's no difference between the two, commercial and private properties.
Well, let us do some research. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ourself, from administrative side of things, and coming, you know, just to maybe talk a little common sense and explain what it is.
It's a pretty good sized property.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda? Please step forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Ian, you wanna say anything?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. My son, he's actually attending a council meeting tonight, so thank you, Ian, for showing up. You have to stay for the whole thing, just to give you a heads up.
You picked the wrong one, Ian.
It's a long agenda. All right, fantastic. Scene numbers of participation closed, so like to open it up now for a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Any extensions? On the financial report, welcome Mr. O'Donnell, please give us an overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone, and a happy new year to all. Trust everyone received their financial packet, albeit it was almost at the eleventh hour, but, uh, we did get it out. In any case, the, uh, we are still seeing a solid growth in terms of our unrestricted cash balances, and that was also due to some major rental checks that come in on an annual basis that came in in December. So we're looking very good at seven point seven million dollars. With respect to the recap of year-to-date revenue and expense, we are doing better than this time of last year. And just a brief comment on that, um, there will be revenues and expenses that will hit the books in the first couple of months of 2016 that belong to 2015 records. And in March, we will, uh, analyze the accounts and move those monies back into 2015, so I would think upon when we present our March revenue and expense year-to-date, um, we will also be giving you a revised December revenue and expense showing all the monies and where they should be. I'm thinking in terms of property tax revenues and other revenues that, um, are usually collected, the line share is usually collected by December thirty-first, therefore the city doesn't get their share until certainly January, February. So just to put that out there for all. A couple of other points I want to bring up. Last council meeting, I mentioned about the, uh, listing of unfunded projects, um, relating to our 2016 budget process. Um, each of you received, uh, a copy of this, and we asked that you, uh, rank those projects in terms of importance such that if monies do come up and we are able to fund projects, we have guidance from the council as to where we should go first. Um, I have only received one so far, author unknown, so, um, if you did, uh, send this in, please let me know who you are, and if you haven't sent it in yet, please do so. We'd like to be able to get an idea.
You hear by Friday?
Yes. Sounds like a good deadline for me.
Council, make sure you send those to Mr. O'Donnell by Friday. Just send them to Brenda, she can recap them for you.
Can you email me a copy of the list?
Absolutely. Why don't we email it out to everybody, just to be on the same side?
I just moved it, and that's only at the bottom of the stack.
Email that again.
Again, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Once again, we will be happy to do so. Item last, uh, some more good news. Uh, we've got some preliminary numbers with respect to sales tax collected and by the Department of Revenue and received by the city. Uh, for December, our one percent sales tax was a hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars and a penny. That gets us year-to-date to two million, two hundred and four thousand, one twenty-eight and change, which is six point seven percent over and above last year's record of two million and sixty-five thousand, nine oh four. So this has been the largest year of tax revenues to date, and we hope we can keep that trend continuing. Along the same lines with the fire sales tax, they also had a very good year, uh, December, twenty-one thousand, nine eighty-four. For the year, twenty, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and eighty dollars rounded, and roughly five percent better than this time last year. And we will, uh, discuss sales tax further when we get the rest of our information in from the Department of Revenue, and that will be at the next meeting. And with that, I await your questions.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell. You have most approved financial report?
Motion.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Any extensions? Mr. Carries, reports of staff, Mr. Krychki, Mr. Derrickson. Future community events? Mr. Keely, sir.
Future community events, we're, uh, remainder of January on into February, even have a march from here, so. January twelfth through February twenty-third is our Rides Foundation Exercise Program. We hold that program at one thirty PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. January thirteenth through February tenth is toddler tumbling, at five thirty or six thirty PM on Wednesdays, for ages two to five. January thirteenth through February tenth is senior week bowling, we hold that program on Wednesdays. Several time slots are available. January eighteenth, this coming Monday, is our Schools Out Program, that's for ages six or in kindergarten through twelve years of age. Uh, program goes from seven AM to six. This coming Monday, January eighteenth, city offices will be closed in observation in Martin Luther King Day. January nineteenth is the last day for filing as a candidate for mayor or city council, for the election will be held on April the fifth. January twenty-sixth is the last day of registration for our winter adult basketball program. The season begins on February third. January twenty-second through February twelfth is Todd Academy, they hold that program at nine thirty or ten forty-five on Fridays at the community center. January twenty-fifth is toddler open gym at nine AM, that's for ages zero to five. January twenty-eighth is senior movie day, three PM, that movie is yet to be announced. Uh, do want to, um, make sure people are aware of our twelfth annual Father Daughter Valentine dance, that will be held on Friday of February the fifth, we're taking registrations for that right now. And we have set the schedule for the AMP in 2016, uh, details are available at theamprepublic.com, but our first event will be April twenty-second.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Board of commissioners committee's schedule, board of adjustments, February fourth, Capitol approval is January twenty-seventh, city council, January twenty-fifth, and February eighth, planning and zoning, January nineteenth. We're without full business tonight, uh, however, we do have new business. Let's have a motion of the first reading, bill number one six dash zero one.
Motion.
I'm gonna motion a second on this side of the board, you guys will...
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you, just checking. I'm gonna motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Any extension? Motion carries.
In honor of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, ten and title seven of the Republic municipal code by repealing and replacing section seven one zero point two nine zero and section seven one five point one three zero.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. Brock, give us a overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a response to changes in state law aimed at reducing, uh, property damage, specifically, uh, damage caused during underground construction. And, uh, the new state law, uh, went into effect January one, and it requires tracer wires on private piping for water and sewer laterals. Now, we're a little bit ahead of most communities, we know this went into effect in January one. NIXA, Ozark, Willard, um, they've not quite made the jump that, uh, I think we need to start on tonight, this bill, um, but it's coming. The ordinance here affects two different sections in the municipal code. One section, uh, in chapter seven ten affects a water customer, the customer's water lines, and, uh, chapter seven fifteen covers a connection to the sewer system. And the changes in our ordinance here in our bill requires tracer wires where those pipes are in the right of way. We don't see this affecting water laterals, water piping, very often because our water meter is located at the right-of-way line, and that's the focus of, uh, both our bill and the state ordinance and the state statute. But it will change, um, substantially how the sewer laterals are constructed. We have two different scenarios, new construction and repairs, this will primarily affect, uh, affect the new construction. On repairs, unless someone is replacing their entire pipe, um, out in the right-of-way, they won't be required to put in the tracer wire. And all of this, of course, is, uh, aimed at having those facilities located. The other half of the state statute is that, um, as an owner of the sewer system, we're required to use our best knowledge to locate the sewer laterals, the tracer wires will help us do that, and if we don't have any location device out there or the tracer wire, we're required to use our best knowledge. So that may be, uh, referring back to construction documents, referring back to, uh, GPS coordinates that we may have taken while other repairs or construction was, uh, was going on. Tonight is the first reading, um, trying to get an effort going with NIXA and Ozark to develop a standardized approach to this. If we're able to do that by the second reading, or if we're able to, uh, we may need to come back later in the spring or summer as other communities get going on this and tweak this other up a little bit, because it would be convenient for, uh, plumbers and contractors to have to take the same approach here in Republic as they do in the area. It is something that plumbers know or is coming. Talked with Tim Farr, Farr Better Plumbing, he's already got his trucks equipped with tracer wire, and he's just kinda waiting for, uh, these requirements to fall into place.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock.
What's the, like, the average additional, is this gonna be much of a cost difference for a customer?
It is not. Tracer wire will probably run you about seven or eight cents a foot. Uh, in some cases, they may have to put in a grounding rod, that will probably be the most expensive part if they have to do that. Uh, those copper rods are pretty expensive. We only would require a one-foot length, so if they buy a typical four-foot grounding rod, they could use that over a number of times. So we would estimate probably ten or twelve bucks if they're required to put in the full length.
No, that's not attached to anything, is it? Where it's live all the time, it's just got a spot where they can tack, tack onto it?
Correct. It would need to be grounded. In some cases, on new construction, they may have, a developer may put out, uh, a ground rod at the main and run a tracer wa- wire up to the stubout, and they build the home, then they simply splice onto that, bring the tracer wire up to the house, they have to bring that up to the service. And it's our equipment, it's our locating equipment that actually puts a charge on that, and we attach it onto the tracer wire.
Just clip on it.
Yes, and that's what allows the receiver to pick that up.
Like a toner and stuff, or then?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And clarification, this is just on new construction, correct?
It would apply to, uh, repairs if they are repairing, uh, the full length out in the right-of-way. Most cases, the repairs are, that's a spot repair here and there, but you do, we do see, uh, some of those where the customer service line is so bad, they've gotta replace the full length. In those cases, uh, this would require them to put that tracer wire in. Thank you. Uh, we do have a, a scheme to track where these are going in, so we'll know about having to go out there and look. We'll know beforehand when that locate comes in, whether we have this available.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Breschers.
And as I read it here, there'll be a forty dollar service charge to come out in these parts?
That is part of the existing code. Um, I believe that was two thousand and four when we added those inspection fees. Uh, it's in the same section, council member, but it's, it's not, uh, directly related to this bill.
Mr. Breschers.
This may have been in the IV, so what's the depth?
Uh, minimum buried depth is, is, uh, below the cross line here, it's eighteen inches.
From like a merization systems and so forth.
The, uh, the rationale I got, there is a company called Looney Underground in St. Louis, a lot, they do a lot of directional bores, uh, there's a member of the family that's a state representative, and that's fairly common for directional bores to, uh, hit these unmarked, uh, private lines. And I, I support it, I think it's a good idea, it's just giving everybody accustomed to doing this and, uh, going through the transition, that may be a little bit painful.
Additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock. Fair enough, this is a first reading. If you have questions or comments to discuss between now and the next meeting, please contact Mr. Brock and Mr. Keely. Sorry, just clearing the buzzer. The next item on the agenda, we'd like to have a motion of the first reading, bill number one six dash zero two.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second from this side of the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In honor of providing for submission of a proposal to discontinue application and selection of the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors which were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on Tuesday, April fifth, 2016.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Derrickson, Mr. Derrickson, give us a overview.
Any questions about that title? Uh, what this is all about is set out in the exhibit, is that in 2012, there was a Missouri Supreme Court case that ruled that the Department of Revenue could no longer collect tax for vehicles that were purchased, like if someone from Republic went to Arkansas and bought a new vehicle, up until that court decision, the tax was paid back to the locale where it came from. The, the state tax was paid to the state, and if the rep- person lived in Republic, then the local sales tax applied. And 2012, the Missouri Supreme Court said, struck that down, said you can't do that. So in response, in 2013, the state legislature basically put that tax back in place by legislation, but said each jurisdiction that wants to collect that needs to have an election by November of 2016, and they did this kinda backwards. They said the election ballot language must say that if you want to discontinue the tax, you vote yes, if you want to keep the tax, you vote no. And so if, if you don't, if you don't put this on the ballot, then in March of 2017, whatever dollars we've been collecting will go away. If it goes on the ballot and the voters vote yes, it discontinues it, then the next quarter it goes away. But if you don't get it on the ballot by November of this year, uh, then you're out completely on it.
Point of clarification, we already have this in place now?
Yes.
So for us, any way to continue to have that tax, uh, this has to be on the ballot. One point of reference, uh, the state cannot give us an exact number, can they?
No, they can't. Um, we did, I, I inquired with representatives of the sales tax unit for the Department of Revenue, and they do not track those specific numbers. Yes, I know. But however, let me also point out, there was an article published by the Missouri Minister, the mayor, and a quote from the, uh, the Missouri Department of Revenue estimated that approximately twenty percent of vehicle and trailer boats and outboard motors' sales occur from out-of-state vendors or person-to-person sales, and this was a result of a loss in revenues in local jurisdictions of approximately twenty point five million dollars. Now, I don't know how they came up with that, or it doesn't matter at this point, and we do not know how much of that twenty point five affects the City of Republic. Suffice to say that we do need to address this, um, certainly before November, and preferably the sooner the better. If the ballot, uh, language goes on in the April election, and as Ron said, the voters say yes to discontinue the tax, we would no longer see it starting October first of 2016. If we do nothing, and just not even put this on the ballot, any, any ballot between now and November, um, we will no longer be collecting that tax as of March first, 2017. So, uh, in short, we recommend that we put this to the voters for decision.
One other thing that they, they point out repeatedly in the articles about this is that if this tax goes away, you're putting your local dealerships at a disadvantage, because a person can go out to a local dealer here and buy a brand-new vehicle and pays the Missouri state tax. If they go down to Harrison, Arkansas, and buy the same vehicle, then they don't have to pay the tax, so they may save fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars.
And they don't pay it there either.
And they don't pay it there. And so our local dealerships used in new cars would be placed at a pretty good disadvantage.
So is that close to par?
Yep.
So are we gonna educate?
Gonna try. I mean, we can't advocate, we can educate.
We can educate all day long, but when you have ballot language that's that confusing, and that's something that can change.
We're trying to use reverse psychology.
I'm sure you can. You gotta, you can't question why, that's the way, it's what we gotta deal with. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Derrickson. Some of the strangest things I've ever seen in my years here. Scene numbers, if you have questions or comments to read now, the next meeting, please contact Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Derrickson, and, uh, we'll get those answered. On the next item on the agenda, we'd like to have a motion of the first reading, bill number one six dash zero three.
Second.
Two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Try that again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Any extension? Motion carries.
In honor of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator, interim city administrator, or mayor to execute any and all necessary documents that meet the requirements of the real estate purchase agreement for the sale of a portion, twenty-three point ninety-five acres of Brookline Park to the City of Springfield, Missouri Board of Public Utilities as the site of a proposed new substation.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Derrickson, give us a overview, sir.
Well, uh, since we last voted on the sales agreement, which council authorized, we've got the title insurance company involved, and they're making requirements right and left, and not knowing what the next one may be, and with the fact that Jim is now leaving, and we're going to have an interim city administrator, uh, I thought it would be wise to have some authorization. If we had to execute some type of document between now and Friday, Jim could do it. After that, uh, it's possible that, uh, that Jared could do that as interim city administrator, but there are some documents that they may require the mayor to execute. So I don't know if they will accept this or not, but I'm trying to do kind of a omnibus authorization to allow us to fulfill the terms of the, uh, sales agreement that, uh, that was entered into, and, and right now, we're in the process of trying to get some things done. Uh, they, although this was not dedicated as a part... They, although this was not dedicated as a park, the deed had a restriction that said it was to be used as a park unless McLean released its right of first refusal. McLean is willing to release its right of first refusal, but the title insurance company said, no, we want you to vacate the restriction. So we're now having to go to planning and zoning and ask them to vacate the restriction, which will then come to you to approve the vacation and ordinance. So that's delayed things, probably two or three more months to get this done.
One thing, if anybody's following along on the actual agenda, the title on the agenda doesn't specifically match the title on the resolution. Very, very close, except for we left the mayor off of the title on the agenda, but we'll correct that for the second read, however, just to make sure that if anybody's following just the agenda item, it does include all three individuals.
Yeah, the mayor was an afterthought, so.
Must come up with some new attorney jokes.
Yeah. Hey, I've had my share. From you.
Got to come up with some new. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Derrickson, our soon-to-be former city attorney.
Thanks. One day away.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Derrickson. Anything at all? All right. See, none, we'll move on. If you have questions or comments between now and the next meeting, please contact Mr. Derrickson in his office, because he will be here. On to other business and resolutions. Resolution 16 dash R dash 01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri authorizing the execution of an advance funding agreement with the Ozarks Transportation Organization. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Welcome, Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The two agenda items pertain to our transportation project on East Hines and Oakwood. This first one here is authorizing execution of an agreement with OTO that allows future STP funds to be utilized on our project. This is something that OTO promotes, particularly for the majority of the members who don't get large annual allocations. It allows you to pool those funds and complete larger projects, such as the one that we have scheduled here in Republic. I do need to make one correction on my exhibit. The last paragraph and the first sentence there says the estimated funding to be made available through this agreement is $812,000 and some odd dollars. From OTO's perspective, if we don't go to construction to 2017, that makes our normal 2017 allocation rate available to us, and so the funding then that looks like we would need through the advance agreement is $546,530 some odd dollars. And again, that's just really what your perspective is from OTO's perspective. We're really looking at borrowing 2018, 2019, and a small slice of 2020 funds to complete our project.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Anything at all? See, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri authorizing the execution of a contract agreement with Olson Associates for engineering and service relating to the Hines and Oakwood transportation improvements. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Motion is second. Give us the overview, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution would authorize a contract with Olson for general consulting, engineering consulting services for that project. We used a modified selection process. We have some requirements from the state to use their pre-qualified list. We have our own local requirements for forming a selection committee, and describe here a process we went through soliciting a number of firms, going through those written statements, then conducting live interviews with the two high-ranked firms, and the consensus of the selection committee was that Olson was best suited to do the work. They're pretty well-known to us. This is a large project, and I want to just hit these bullet points here on the scope of services, because it is a little broader than what we have done in the past, simply because of the resources, of the city not having the resources to do some of the things that we might typically do. The first thing we were going to ask them to do is a scoping study, and this is to go back in and refine our cost estimates. We have a lot of interest in adding work on East Hines east of Oakwood, and we want to analyze a couple of different options for what can be done out there to address stormwater, structural issues, maybe capacity expansion at some key intersections. That scoping study would be brought back to the city council, and at that time, we'd kind of, we need to finalize what those project limits are, finalize what our project cost is going to be. Land surveying, flood plain analysis, there's a lot of environmental review to be completed, course plans and specifications, help us with our bidding documents, construction engineering, construction inspection is one that we have typically taken on in the past, we'd like to contract that out in this case, and then also materials testing, which is now a function that Olson can do in-house. We have a number of representatives here tonight, John Forrester, also Chad and Nathan. If you had any questions, I'm sure they would be happy to be on. I'm sorry.
This is one of the, I say newer, relatively new members of Olson in charge of transportation issues, going to be one of the key employees, and for Keston Wilson and Harder, if you sat through the presentations, there was a marked difference in the firms. And I think the gentleman's contribution was one of the primary differences as far as laying out schedules that you could visualize how this project was going to move along. You could just sense a level of organization that you didn't see with some of the other firms.
Questions, comments, discussion?
The front work was real good, very, very professional front work.
Well, and I speak on behalf of Olson, we were very excited about this opportunity to work with Republic, so we realize it's a very important project for your community.
Oh, yeah, more than you know.
Any questions, council? See, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, resolution 16 dash R dash 03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, warranting a proposal for pumping equipment to be incorporated into the Schuler Creek Lift Station improvement project. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. Give us the overview, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution here is very similar to a bid award, with the exception that we want to use the equipment that is selected in a larger construction contract, and we're taking this approach due to some issues that we've experienced locally in the past. I don't know if you remember, we had a bid with the Schuler Creek Pump Station, I'm sorry, the stormwater pumping station out of the Derry Creek and plant, where we saw a very wide variety in the cost of the pump equipment. And we want to take the approach here where we've done a very deep analysis of the available pumps out there and select those pumps, and when we go out for bid for the general contract, those pumps will appear at the bid price that you see here. This eliminates the pump manufacturer or the pump sales company from playing games or providing different pricing to different contractors. This eliminates the contractor from marking up those prices, and at over a quarter billion dollars, a 10% or a 5% markup can be pretty substantial. We had a very good team here with our staff and with John Forrester and his staff that he put together for the project, did a very detailed analysis on the flow range and efficiency. That's very important. We can't afford to lose any capacity at this pump station. We need that capacity for new development. Their experience from our operators, the reliability of the pumps is number one. The price, familiarity, annual O&amp;M costs, operating maintenance costs, where their warranty and service centers are, and the modifications necessarily get this new equipment in there. We balanced all those things together, we came up with a scoring matrix, and we have made a recommendation to select flight pumps. They're not the cheapest, in fact, they're the most expensive, however, if you look at a 20-year lifespan, what we expect to get out of these pumps, we think from that perspective, they are in the, really in the city's best interest from, if you factor in all those other issues.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? How much have we spent at this little station over the years, the pump cost?
I've got a table there on the last page.
Is that accurate, including the $24,000?
Yes. Well, now the $24,000, we think we can hold off. The project is moving forward, and so for the time being, we don't plan on making, authorizing those repairs.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
We've basically had $190,000 in repairs over the years at those pumps, is that what I'm guessing?
Yes, since 2007.
Questions, comments, discussion? See, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Resolution 16 dash R dash 04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri authorizing the Republic Fire Chief to advertise for bids for a new aerial truck for the Republic Fire Department. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
A motion is second. Welcome, Chief Compton, give us the overview, sir.
Good evening. This is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and Mr. Criskie asked if we'd do this, because this project's going to span a couple of years. When we passed the fire department sales tax in 2013, we had a vehicle replacement plan in here of what we were going to do. As you know, we purchased the two engines, forgot those in service, and had good luck with those, and the 93 aerial truck that's at fire station two is currently out of service, and the motor is in some serious needs of repairs, and we just kind of parked it. Don't want to put any money in it. The truck's resale value would be $50,000 to $60,000. We're looking at $23,000 in repairs, not really feasible to fix it at this particular point. We're looking for a mechanic. Jim thought he had a person lined up that, I need an old-school diesel Detroit mechanic, if anybody knows one, call me, that would come and fix it. And we're not having good luck with that, and Jared Keeling knows his father-in-law, possibly knows somebody as well that could come and fix it versus taking it to a dealership in Springfield. So we developed a bid specification for a new aerial truck, and it's a generic spec. Over the past year and a half, we've had seven manufacturers come to town with trucks. We've taken them, driven them, we've got likes, dislikes, and from that, we've come up with our generic specs. The plan of attack is we'll go out and bid hopefully Friday of this week, because of two holidays and the bid window, it'll be open till approximately the 17th of next month, and then the first council meeting in March, and I can't remember that date, forgive me, we'll come back to you with a recommendation to make an award. From that point forward, we're looking at about a 13- to 14-month build time for the truck. The fire apparatus vendors are so busy, because everybody's come out of recession, that the orders are stacked up, and that's about where we're looking at. So we're looking at a 2017 April timeframe for delivery. We've looked at the secondary market, we found one truck we were interested in, it was 10 years old, and they wanted $800,000. And so at that particular price, we told the voters we'd be right at a million dollars for this truck, and at 10 years old at $800,000, just not feeling it. Sorry.
Why'd you look on eBay?
Didn't find it on eBay.
Post, post I want to add for your mechanic on Craigslist.
Questions, comments, discussion for Chief Compton?
Is this going to meet our needs for the future?
Yeah, these trucks generally will get 20 to 25 years out of us, easy. A lot of our warranty stuff is for 25 years, from the frame, the aerial, and stuff like that. So we feel confident, unless something was to happen to the manufacturer, that we will get that confidence out of it.
And so the 100-foot aerial, that's, that is a 100-foot aerial, correct?
Yeah, it's always a horse race. It's either 100, 101, 102.
Okay.
But yes, in that range, no shorter. Maybe 102, 103.
Go for the 103 for the money.
It's all the same length. It's a matter of how they do the engineering and the hydraulics. Usually they grade them at a 75% grade. Now, one manufacturer can push that to 80%, so he can get 103 out of it, which is a lot of fun to climb, because it's almost straight up.
And that's going to suit all of our needs, 100 feet?
I hope, because that's about as big, well, that's about as big as I think. They have some applications where they're up in 125. Probably wouldn't want to buy one of those, because they don't want to be the first person to own that. You understand what I'm saying?
We can always strap an exhaust platter on it if we need to.
Sure. Couple of bungee cords, we can do.
You two did graduate really close to each other, I can tell.
Yeah.
Charlie was our teacher.
I like my job, I'm not going to go there.
You didn't pass. You teach your math, right? Apparently.
Still got locked in.
Cannot believe this. Just a ward member on the bus.
Part of the fire truck.
Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Compton? On a serious note, this is a huge budgeted item. We've had discussion over this for a couple of years now, so with our vehicle matrix, we are having to replace some older vehicles. This is one of the larger expenditure ones, if you haven't noticed, so we want to be very careful, that's why we went this process. Typically, we don't follow this type of process, we go through the bid process, like we would do a police vehicle, whatever, this is a tad different, so that's why we're doing it this way. Any further questions for Chief Compton?
I want to sign a note, if I win the lottery Wednesday, I'll buy you the truck as a part of it. Just saying.
That's nice.
That's on record.
It's true.
It'll even autograph it.
Additional questions, comments, pertinent discussion for Chief Compton? See, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you, Chief. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving a preliminary plat of the Woodland Park Estates Phase III subdivision located along 1400 block of South Illinois Avenue in the City of Republic, Missouri. Welcome, Mr. Teixeira, give us the overview, sir.
Yes, this preliminary plat proposes to add an
Yes. This preliminary plat proposes to add an additional 26 lots to the Woodland Park Estates development. This will be the third phase of that development. It is located in the city's medium-density, single-family residential zoning district, which means that all of the lots will have at least 9,000 square feet in area. This particular development has been pre-platted before by this city council. So if it looks familiar, that's why. A lot of the infrastructure, it had also been previously permitted for construction. So some of the infrastructure in this phase has already been built and will be reclaimed and put back into service. Yes, sir.
I need a motion to have the first reading of bill number 16 dash R dash 05.
No. You already read it. You just need a motion.
I just need a motion. 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 Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Tyson. We had to get our stuff straight up here. Thank you, sir. Continue. Want to start over?
No.
Good. You keep going.
Planning and zoning commission and staff both recommend approval of this preliminary plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Tyson? Anything at all?
Aye.
Close no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of the Republic of Missouri approving the purchase of a new Ford F-350 four-by-four dump bed work truck for the Parks and Recreation Department's Maintenance Division. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
A motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Keating. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you. Recommending purchases of vehicles to replace our 89 shot bed that we've achieved from the Public Works Department. Been a good truck for us, but it's a little worn out. So direct replacement, we'd be usually looking to rent ourselves of that vehicle on the auction market. I believe that's the appropriate term. For those of you who don't know, our use for this type of vehicle is for all of our landscaping, hauling dirt, hauling rock, hauling mulch, and then pulling trailers with tractors, mowers, et cetera, mostly to Brookline Park, but all of our parks are located around town. Dump bed cab four-by-four, dual leaf, mainly for the hauling purposes.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Keating?
I should have stated, sorry, this is off of a state bid.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Keating? Anything at all? Say no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Any extensions?
Thank you.
On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of the Republic of Missouri authorizing the purchase of four police vehicles for the Republic Police Department. Would like to have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome, Chief Law. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you. Not wanting to be left behind in the vehicle purchase arrangement, the police department is, needs to replace four vehicles this year. Three of those vehicles are patrol vehicles. One is an administrative vehicle. We are proposing to replace them with the Ford utility, which is a Ford Explorer. We have those vehicles. We've had those over the last couple of years. They seem to be working well for us, both from a maintenance standpoint and a mileage standpoint and a utility standpoint for the officers to be able to use them. So we're recommending to continue the purchases and replacement of the Ford utilities for our patrol staff. And we're actually making a change. We apparently purchased a used Crown Victoria some years ago as an administrative vehicle. The plan is to have the patrol lieutenant, one of these vehicles be the patrol lieutenant's vehicle, and operate it as a small command post vehicle. Would have the same components as a small command post should a critical incident occur. That will be down the road. We're going to get it outfitted as a lieutenant's vehicle, and then eventually it'll have a small command post in the back. So we are recommending purchase of these four vehicles. We're trying to take advantage of the 2015 pricing for the 2016 vehicles. That's why they're on the first, our first agenda, our first council meeting this year. We actually are getting these at 2015 pricing. The total pricing is about $109,000 and some change for the vehicles from Republic Ford Lincoln, and then another $24,600 and some change for the outfitting of equipment. These vehicles are going to be replacing Dodge Chargers. And so we're changing from Dodge Chargers to Ford Explorers in these vehicles, and that requires all new equipment.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Chief Law?
Mr. Wilson?
Just a few questions.
Are they four-wheel drive or two-wheel drive?
They're actually all-wheel drive. So they're not four-wheel drive. They're all-wheel drive. And we do have some of those in our fleet, and we're, we haven't had a chance to see them fully operational in any kind of ice storm or anything. But the belief is that they'll be a better vehicle than the Dodge two-wheel drives.
Okay.
Yeah. And probably better than the Ford utility two-wheel drives. Oh, no.
Do you know if we have any Ford utility two-wheel drives?
No. So we didn't get in the very beginning, they were just two-wheel drives. Now they're all-wheel drives. We purchased just those. They've been successful for us. Very, very good utility vehicle.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
One thing is on the light bars, everything that you're going to have off the charges, they're an after-market for those. It sells opportunities for those.
Yeah. All of that, all the lighting equipment and the additional brackets and all those things that go inside those patrol cars is part of that second portion of that, the $24,600. And that is, that's not equipment that we can carry over from the Chargers.
But we can't carry them over to the next vehicles, do you believe?
Pardon?
We can't carry these, the new stuff.
Yes. When we replace these Ford Explorers with new Ford Explorers, the likelihood, unless there's significant change in the body styles, size, all those kind of things, it will swap over, as we did with the Ford, with the Dodge Chargers in years past.
And any surplus we can get off of the old Chargers that we surplus out, then we'll look for opportunities to get rid of that as well.
Yeah. It's a small, small amount of dollar revenue back from the equipment. Those state agencies that are still using Dodge Chargers may want to use that equipment. We'll sell it and get what we can for it back into the revenue side.
These vehicles, those replacement vehicles will go to the school district.
Yeah. That's up to the school district. And we do that every year, depending on what vehicles are available and whether they wish to take those ones that are available. My guess is that will happen in this year.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Any extensions? Motion carries. 7 to 0. Resolution number 16 dash R dash 08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of the Republic of Missouri authorizing the execution of a five-year lease agreement with WatchGuard for nine in-car video camera systems. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Give us the overview, Chief.
Okay. This is something a little different than what we've done in the past. And so if there's some questions, I'm happy to answer them. The proposal here is for us to purchase really eight additional in-car cameras for the eight additional patrol cars that are currently, do not have WatchGuard in-car videos in our fleet. The ninth camera, that last camera, would be a similar camera that would be installed in our interview room within the police department. And I'll explain shortly why that's a little bit different but important. What we found is that our existing equipment over the last several years has been at least two different brands of equipment, two different methods of uploading the data to our server, all manual uploading of the data to the server. And to be frank with you, the equipment is unreliable. The other brand equipment has been unreliable for us. And when it breaks, it's very difficult to get it repaired. The approach that we're taking is what many agencies are taking, which is to lease the equipment. It's really a lease purchase. At the end of the lease, you actually own all of the equipment. And the important part of that is it comes with a full warranty replacement. So when the piece of equipment is not working, we call the manufacturer. They send us a new one, and then we send them back the broken one. So we're virtually always operational, except for maybe a short period of time for the transfer in the mail or the process. So we're trying to make it more, more efficient, more economical, and also more reliable. Frankly, our cameras aren't been reliable. Right now, we have two WatchGuard, we have two vehicles, patrol vehicles, with WatchGuard in them. So what this, this does is it makes it 10 vehicles, plus that interview room is the 11th one. And it actually brings those two old WatchGuard in-car cameras that we have that are a couple of years old, it actually brings them into the warranty. So we're getting a little bit of bonus, more than just the eight and the one cameras that are new. So we are proposing a five-year lease. This is a lease that would be paid annually in one payment, $16,905. I know that's a significant amount. But what it works out to be is over the five-year period, we're paying about $20,000 in warranty upgrades and financing costs. Now, it's hard to do this apples and oranges in terms of what the breakdown actually is. But if you were just to go buy a unit tomorrow, they're about 5, $5,500, $6,000 just to buy the piece of equipment, just the thing. Now, we're buying servers, remember, a server to, I didn't, I should tell you that. We're buying the server with this and a Wi-Fi component that will eliminate our manual uploads. This is one of the things that we've found is very difficult for us, for the officers and for our staff, to spend time ensuring that the camera recordings in the car are brought into a server and kept for evidence. This system will allow us a Wi-Fi connection. The officer pulls into the back lot of the police department, the Wi-Fi will pick up that vehicle, WatchGuard camera. It will upload that to our WatchGuard server, secure server that will keep all of our digital evidence, including the interview room that I mentioned earlier. So they'll all be kept on the same server and all be downloaded. And we're hoping that eliminates a lot of staff time in terms of the manual removal of the card from each of the cars, put into a computer and uploading that. And all that together is very important for us in terms of time spent with staff. And then you don't even, we're throwing in the additional, the equipment's warranted. If it breaks, we can send off the new stuff and get it, and get it back in the car operation as quickly as possible. I don't think we've ever had all of our cars with in-car cameras that are operational. And really, that's the goal of this project. So we're asking for approval for the council. We did budget this item in our budget for next year. We're asking for approval. The full cost over the five-year period will be $84,525. At the end of that, we'll own the equipment. I don't want to fool you in any way. Five years on this kind of equipment is likely going to be at the end of its life cycle. Depends. We'll have to see what happens at the end of five years. But we do own the equipment at the end of it.
Questions, comments, discussion for Chief Law?
I've got a few. Is the data storage getting good enough where the cameras are on all the time? Are they still only going on when you have the emergency light bar going?
Are you talking about current?
What these will do.
Well, there's a, there's, it's a, there's a lot of technicalities to it. But there's different mode, depending on what the mode is of the vehicle. If it's a lights and siren, it will do it at a higher, help me out some.
It's HD or?
Yeah.
It goes to HD, high resolution.
Yeah.
Once it's activated.
Just your-
It records all the time.
It'll lower, gotcha.
Just your normal driving around will be a lower level quality recording that'll allow for more, more storage of the space.
Sure. So it's efficient.
Does that answer your question?
That one. Second one, is there a possibility if we go to cameras on the officers, does this system tie in with that, where the two link together in any way where you can add on, as an add-on option?
That is a component that we looked at. This does not include any body worn cameras, so I want to make that clear.
Sure.
But we, we have had discussions with the vendor WatchGuard. They are proposing a new body worn camera in 2016. That's what they're, they're saying, their marketing. We'll see, wait and see what happens. That would integrate with this, with this in-car camera. So an officer could wear a body worn camera and have the in-car camera, which is the ultimate solution because a lot of the activity that it would record with the body worn camera may be away from the vehicle.
Sure. Yeah. And you'd want it to be compatible with your server and all that kind of stuff. So you weren't going to have two, two systems and two Wi-Fi and all that to maintain.
They are making that compatible, but that is not part of this.
Sure. Sure. And I was wanting to make sure there was an option. If you went to something, you would want something that was expandable. I mean, it's easier to maintain.
Potentially, we may be coming back next year if, if we feel the product is a, is a good product. We may be coming back year, next year to see if there's some, if we buy a few to integrate that, to see how that works. That is a possibility.
My final question, is all the storage at the station, or is there a cloud storage involved in this, where they all take that server and back it up off premises?
No. I think this is an in-house server specifically dedicated for this purpose for this evidence.
Can we add to see if we can back that off-site backup or redundancy on that in case something were to happen to the, I mean, we'd lose all our evidence if we had something happen to the police department.
If you lose this, you lose everything in the city. It's going to be the same server app with Sean's other stuff. But it is, it does have mirrored drives. So there is some redundancy built into it. And that's why we bought so much memory on it.
Sure. We've questioned the other servers all mean in one location too. If you ever take on a flash there or a tornado or anything, you've lost, there's no off premises backup. And I don't know, maybe be working on the other one, but that would be a concern of mine, especially if it's containing evidence.
Well, I think we could, we definitely can look at what those costs are to back that up somewhere else in remote locations and see. You know, we could look at that in this year once we get this equipment.
Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Law? Say no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of the Republic of Missouri authorizing the city administrator into, into an employment contract with Jerry Kendall to serve as ADA slash special projects coordinator within the- Additional questions, comments, discuss for Chief Law? See none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, thank you. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Copy Products Inc. for new copiers for the City of Republic. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As the exhibit discusses, several years ago, we were in a previous lease agreement regarding copier needs and we took care of various city departments at that point in time. Fast forward several years and we have once again reviewed our department copy needs and that we are looking to make changes in Police, Parks and Recreation and Utility Billing Departments. The documents attached to this exhibit illustrates the options that we have under two national agreements that the city is eligible to participate in. One under the Associated, Association, excuse me, of Educational Purchasing Agencies, the other National Association of State Procurement Officials. There is an analysis of what the monthly lease cost would be under each contract with respect to each of the departments. And as we, as we state, the AEP-A contract deals with Conica Minot products, the NASPO with Toshiba products. And although the AEP-A contract is higher on an annual basis by approximately $758 or five percent, staff feels that we have, we are more familiar with the Conica product if we have a lower service call ratio and feel that that would serve us better in the long run as opposed to the NASPO contract for Toshiba products. I would also at this time like to introduce and bring up here, Mr. Matt Puccio of Copy Products Inc. Matt is thoroughly familiar with the city's needs, has worked with us before and is also available for questions, comments and discussion. And so, it is staff's recommendation to enter into a lease agreement with Copy Products Inc. under the AEP-A agreements.
Questions, comments, discuss? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, thank you. On the next item, resolution number 16 dash R dash 1B, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri authorizing the city administrator into, into an employment contract with Jerry Kendall to serve as ADA slash special projects coordinator within the Planning and Development Department. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Welcome, Mr. Kriesske. Last one for you.
Uh, no, one more after that, I think. I've got two remaining. All right. This particular resolution, as the title says it all, is to enter an appointment contract with Jerry Kendall to serve our, as primarily our ADA coordinator, also as special projects coordinator and be working under direct supervision of our Planning and Economic, or Planning and Development Department Director Gail Nagle. This is, we've been trying to address this a couple of different ways over the last couple of meetings and really we've honed in on this being our very best option to bring forth somebody that has background and knowledge with ADA compliant issues and be able to get our program up and running and implemented. With that being said, we're not exactly sure the amount of time that's going to need to be dedicated towards ADA issues. We could find out it could be a full-time, forty-hour-a-week job and nothing more. More than likely, there's going to be times where there's going to be other projects that can be worked into his schedule as well. So, after talking to Gail and figuring out some of the needs within the Planning Department, we just felt this would be a very good fit for him to, again, primarily work on our ADA implementation of that program, but then also serve a fair amount of time doing other special projects within the Planning and Development Department. There are a couple of other needs, not specifically addressed here, but FOGS program, there's still a few things remaining there that, that need to be tackled, that could be done very early on in his re-service here in, in the city. Because as everybody knows, Jerry was here as an intern from the summer through the end of December. So, there's no lack of projects and things to do, but of course, the main focus on this again would be the ADA compliance issues.
Questions, comments, discuss for Mr. Kriesske?
And, and, no, I think the, the contract is going to start next Monday, would be, well, Tuesday since Monday, Monday is a holiday on the nineteenth, and then it would extend to the end of December. Just want to make sure that everyone realizes during that time period, we will start to get a real good feel of how much time it's going to take to do ADA and what are some of the other projects. So, during that time period, we will be able to address a more permanent solution to how we need to go forward, especially in the 2017 budget. So, this will get us started, give us the time to really evaluate the program in general and what we need to, to put towards that in terms of resources and manpower and then come back with a more permanent, longer-term solution into the 2017 budget. Sorry, that's it.
It's okay. You're all right. Good to be in the present. Next to last one. Questions, comments, discuss for Mr. Kriesske? Mr. Klinkybeare?
Are there any certifications or training or anything like that that Jerry will be able to take advantage of to help us in that ADA area?
Yeah, and, and I put in, in the, in the exhibit, you all saw, Jerry's got specific background and knowledge, worked with the Christian County Board already, but as to the certification, MSU, Missouri State offers a certification program. Jerry's already indicated that he would like to start that program right away. It will be, as, as he says, it'll be on his time, you know, that he'll complete those certifications, but yes, he does want to go into getting fully certified for ADA issues.
So, if this is an ongoing, we determine this is an ongoing permanent position, that might be something that we could add into that.
Yes, sure.
Additional questions, comments, discuss? See none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, thank you very much. On the last item on this particular agenda, resolution number 16 dash R dash 11, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with GovHR USA to conduct a national search for a city administrator. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Kriesske, give us the overview, sir.
This is definitely fitting that I present this, but I will, I'll give you the overview on this. Obviously, the title says it all. There's a couple of different methods to go about doing a search for a new city administrator and that could be for a new city administrator, it could be for a new police chief, it could be for any departmental director, this method would apply. But in particular, for the new city administrator, this is the preferred method to go about getting yourself a, a executive search firm to be able to handle the recruitment for you. There's specific advantages to that in that they certainly have a, a reach into the industry and into the market. They have certainly many connections with professionals, city administrators that are looking for new positions. They will handle all of the initial interviews, all of the background checks and what have you, go through a very detailed process to come back to the city with a very small, select group of candidates that they feel would be a good fit for the city. Typically, that will be around ten and then the city council will sit down with the recruiter and be able to narrow that field down to a more workable number, say four or five. They would start the process by, if approved, they would come here to the city, they would interview the mayor, of course, all city council members, department directors, make sure that they get a real good feel of what the city's issues are, what kind of person they're looking for and be able to gear that, gear their, their recruitment information towards exactly what the city is, is looking for. This particular company that's recommended is called GovHR USA. They are the firm that, new name because they merged with another company about two years ago, but it's the same firm that did the recruitment when I came onto the city eight and a half years ago. It's a different recruiter, recruiter that, well, Heidi Voorhees is the same recruiter, but the, the person that assists Heidi in these searches is a different person than had done recruitment when I was here, but they're all very qualified people. We had two proposals delivered to the city, one from GovHR USA and another one from Strategic Government Resources out of Texas. We interviewed both via conference call. Of course, this is more a mayor and city council decision than it would be for staff, but clearly the recommendations from the mayor in concurrence with Jared and myself was that GovHR would be a very good fit for the city. Plus, they were less expensive than the other firm. So, the recommendation tonight is to move forward with GovHR and start the process.
Questions, comments, discuss?
I may have to have this. Save some money.
I figured that would come on Thursday.
I will say Heidi Voorhees, who owns this company, was the one that did our recruitment in Jip. So, Heidi's very familiar with the City of Republic and has done, did a great job the first time and is very buttoned up this time as well. So, it wasn't actually Heidi, it was Lisa Nibroski.
Mm-hmm.
So, just give you kind of an overview of that.
Comments, questions, discussion? Ms. Poole?
No.
Okay. Let's check it.
I was looking to see if the reference included the city administrator for Maryland Heights.
And that, and that, and I had disclosed that beforehand, but, but they are very prominent in the Midwest, especially in Illinois and Missouri and, and they do the vast majority of those because they, they do it for a very reasonable and fair price and they're very thorough in what they do. But, but yes, they, they did that and, but they, I will have to say, they did not recruit me, they didn't, I don't want to have anybody think that they were, I know the word they used when we were talking to them is they don't go out and poach people and, and do that. I mean, they, they certainly are not like that and they would never do that, uh, you know, whoever they brought here. In fact, they even said for a full five years, they wouldn't even talk to.
Right.
The person.
They also have a clause, if I'm not mistaken, in their contract too, probably read it in there, that if the city administrator doesn't work out within such a time period, then they'll go back and redo the search for you for free. So, that's kind of how, most of them have that clause in there. You can probably see that in SGRs as well. So, just give me the, a little heads up on that as, as part of the.
Any further discussion, comments, questions?
That starts Thursday at 6:05 or something like, when they get looking?
Yes. No, it starts tomorrow. If you pass it, it starts tomorrow. Anything at all? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, all right. We're gonna, we have executive session. Mr. Kriesske, it's been a pleasure working with you, sir. Last eight years? It's been nine years, something like that?
Eight and a half, eight and a half. It's been my pleasure. It's been awesome.
Would like to have a motion to go into executive session under RS MO 610.021.2.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Klinkybeare?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschere?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
That concludes our open session business. We will take a five-minute recess to take a break before we get started executive session. This meeting particularly is adjourned. Mr. Ian, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate you being here, son.